We're gonna move up the... Damon? We're gonna move up the review of proposed changes to the Triton Regional School Agreement. And Brian Foygett, who is the superintendent of our schools, is here tonight. Brian, can you come over this way? Michael, could you run at the table?
I have...
We can put the table there.
I know. She's coming. She's gonna be like this.
Well, guess what? I'm gonna propose...
No, she can... she can say that. Nerissa is also here. She represents the town of Raleigh. She worked a lot on this meeting.
Well, what I'm gonna do is just speak a little bit. I'm gonna give this to you.
Oh, great.
You cut me off. But let me say this, and I'll work with Alicia. The finance committee has come tonight because they have discussed this a little. Gene and others have been to meetings, and they're going to look at it with us. This is an informal session for us. We're not gonna take a vote because it really hasn't been vetted through town council yet. But I mean, certainly, you'll have some wisdom come out of the night, and you maybe can have a position. But let's... we're not gonna take a formal vote, right, Tracy?
No. No, we're not gonna vote on this until it's... This could be a long time coming.
Okay.
This is a beginning process.
And Alicia is gonna take this, and as I understand it, she'll probably discuss the things that have little gray squares at the bottom.
Yeah.
You can go along with that. You also have in your packets, guys, the minutes of those meetings and the synopsis that was in the minute of the school committee meetings. Alicia, you ready?
I'm ready.
So the vacancies?
Yes. So Gene and Frank were at this meeting with me too, so feel free if anything or you've got any... you wanna add anything?
Just one point before we get started. Before this even... Brian, you corrected what I'm wrong. It requires a vote of all three boards of selectmen and all three alternate members.
I don't even know if it involves... it starts with a school committee vote?
Well, yes.
I don't know that it has to be a selectman's vote. It goes to town meeting.
Town meeting.
And then once it's passed, all three, it's an im, it's not two-thirds, and then the commissioner has to approve it, which, unless there's something crazy...
Ultimately, that's where this votes, whenever all of this comes together.
Absolutely.
Brian, just a question.
Yeah.
Before we get started. I mean, there were times that we asked for the review of the agreement in the past, especially when we were in all the good trouble in 2010s and things like this. How did this get started? Just give us a little history.
So, let's take it back. So this was born out of... we've been having an ongoing discussion, those of you who have sat around the district communications committee table. We've been discussing this for years. There, as you said, Chairman Walker, ebb and flowed. Some towns have thought, I'd like to propose this discussion. There have been different things that have arisen over the years. The consistent theme that we keep talking about is having a discussion about an alternative funding arrangement, assessment formula, if you will. And then the other piece that keeps coming up is this concept of landlord. As you know, you own Newbury Elementary School. The town of Raleigh owns Pine Grove School. The district owns Salisbury Elementary and on the middle high school campus. So there are subtle nuances in who pays for what. You know, the old landlord tenant, you know, pick up the building, shake it, and if it falls out, it's the tenants, otherwise it's the landlords. And so there's discrepancies between towns and how we are paying as a district and apportioning to the member towns a cost for the buildings. So those are the two things that have come up fairly routinely over, I'm gonna say, five, six years. During the 1516 school year, during the 1415 school year, the DCC agreed, we keep going back and forth, why doesn't the school committees start the process? We'll take it and say, okay, let's do a full step-by-stern review. Started that process, and over the course of the 1415 school year, the finance... 1617? Oh, no. I'm sorry. Yeah. So during the 1415 year, the agreement was... Then the following year, 1516, last year, the finance subcommittee was charged with kind of leading that discussion and went through the entire agreement. You know, there have been lots of questions about, are these all, you know, lying in the sand, have to have these changes? I would say, for me personally, no. The concept was, if we take it, go through the agreement, it gives us a discussion document. So what you have is the document that emerged from the finance subcommittee, this full school committee review, and you now have a document that has all of the edits. And then anything that has, you know, more than a grammatical or, you know, a slight semantic change has a box to describe the reasoning for that. So that's where we are as of now. The selectmen in Salisbury last night went through, edit by edit, if you will, and said, we agree, we disagree. Ultimately, that's what will be helpful, not that you vote...
Would you like that out of us a little tonight?
It would certainly be helpful because then we can come back and say, look, here, you know, the first edit, two out of three, no interest in having a discussion about it. Okay, that gives us some good data. Three out of three, great. No one wants to talk about this? Okay, good. At least it gives us a starting point to say, here's where we're gonna focus our efforts and our energy.
I mean, maybe we can reset to, we usually need to have a little bit of town council weighing in too, right?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, maybe it's just, you'll get an idea about position instead of following the vote.
Well, if we all don't like something, there's no reason to make town council review.
Well, that's probably...
That's a way to set it down.
You think we'll get to that?
There's always a chance.
All right. Ali, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, go.
So under section one, B, vacancies, the thought behind this change was that this change would reflect the current election process as to how seats are filled, that school committee seats is filled. So right now, when a seat comes up, we have one coming up in May, all three towns vote and elect that person. So in theory, a school committee representative could not win their town, winning the other two, and sit on the board. So it's to kind of... it's, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the process that we are one district. We have one... you know, all our kids go to the same district. We are three separate towns, but when it comes to the school, we are one district. So this change is going to reflect... right now, well, last, well, when I... or my seat here, there was a vacancy in the school committee, and we had, this board took recommendations and from people who wanted to sit, sit on it. Mory Heffernan came in, the school committee came in, and we discussed it, and she was ultimately voting in. What this will provide for is not only have the five board of selectmen members, it will have two, the two school committee people, so that's seven, from one town, and it will also provide for one school committee person from each of the other towns, so one from Raleigh, one from Newbury. Still, majority still rules when you come to vote, but it just reflects the way the current process is for filling the seat. Did I say that correctly?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it is.
The only point I would say is that it still leaves the majority vote with the selectmen because all three towns now have five selectmen. So there would be five selectmen, two members, two town school committee members, and then one from each of the other towns.
If there was a vacancy in Newbury, someone resigned, there would be seven votes from the town of Newbury.
Right now.
There would be... and now we're adding, this proposal would add a vote from Salisbury and vote from Raleigh, which would be school committee votes. That's basically what that proposal is. Currently, to Alicia's point, all three towns currently all vote on the candidates from all three towns.
I have a question. When somebody from Salisbury runs or somebody from Raleigh runs, we in Newbury have no idea who these people are. We don't know whether they're going to be a good representative for their town or not. I don't... I don't understand it.
I can answer that.
Or a good representative from the district.
Right. We don't have any idea who they are.
So that's why it's important to go to these meet the candidate nights and go to... stay informed. It's not even a matter of if they're good for that person's town. At least in my opinion, it's either good for the district. Because when the district succeeds, each individual town succeeds. So that's the...
It's just... It's hard because they just...
We have to...
They need to...
I know. You have to read the paper. Actually, when they gen, they have meet the candidate sections in the paper. You can read that or call them now, so you have... and they will work.
I do know they've come when events have been in Newbury, candidates from the other towns have come and come to those events.
Never ever... forty-five years of living in this town, I have never seen one have any meeting I've ever been to.
We did one...
Never.
We did one a couple of years ago, and they came, and that was how I learned about them back there.
Never.
But the question is, do we want to change? That's the question. Do we want to change? I think you should note two guys because you have the minutes and you've all read them. And I'm not gonna say this after everyone, but Raleigh has already weighed in on this one, there's no change, right?
Yeah. And my inclination is that it... well, I understand what the drive is, to be more inclusive and more oriented towards the three communities. It just seems like it's making it cumbersome, and I don't... you know, they're not gonna have... a representative from Raleigh and Salisbury is not gonna add greatly to the discussion when we're nominating and electing someone to fill the seat. So I don't see the value personally.
Chuck, you have a comment? JR?
I don't see a real reason to change this.
So we're starting to get a little feeling like they're gonna vote on this one.
Well, we're not gonna vote on anything. We're just gonna put a thumbs up or thumbs down.
Well...
And not taking a vote.
So how many people are without a vote, but it seems... what's the feel? How many people want no change at this point?
I clearly don't see any reason to change.
It doesn't matter.
So that gives you a feel. How's that?
I received that information. Our official vote.
I'm gonna put...
Could you just say how many people raised their hands for us?
Four.
Four. And one was ambiguous. I don't...
That's the first time ever. All right, where are we going?
Okay, so on the next page...
Government?
Yeah, votes in government. Actually, Brian, I'm gonna let you speak to this one because I think I know what it means, but I'm not sure.
I'm glad you're here, buddy.
Yeah. So the first thing is the significant amount of text struck in the middle that basically is moving that sentence to the front of the paragraph. The basic change here is that it used to require, or currently I should say, required that if at one of the elementary schools, a change in a program, a reduction of a program was going to happen or to close a school, it requires all three of the members of that town, whether it's at Pine Grove, all three from Raleigh, Newbury Elementary, all three from Newbury, and so forth, all three of those members from that town to take action as a full committee, even though the full committee has the jurisdiction over the program. So again, the spirit here is putting the overall process to the general work of the committee, which is, it's a majority vote, so it's a two-thirds vote. So rather than, you know, anytime you have a committee, our committee, I'm on it, you don't wanna have the ability for one person to be able to hold up something that the vast majority of the committee wants to do. So as it's written now, one committee member could do that. So the theory is have all the folks on the committee and have a simple two-thirds majority vote.
I think that makes sense. And I think the original intent, back when the agreement was written back in 1916, '17, was more of a political decision to... because the towns obviously were more invested as individual towns. That was part of the purpose for that back then. I think now, I would even question, I mean, you had one person out of... how many members?
Nine.
Nine can put a stop to a program that might, that is a tremendous benefit, you know, it's obviously would have been recommended by the administration.
That's... that's how I...
It's almost... almost sounds like...
The black ball.
Well, it sounds unconstitutional.
It gives one person... it gives one person the power to hold up the whole budget process. It just gives one person... I don't think it's ever been used.
It's program change, though, right? I mean, we're talking...
I mean, in my eleven years in central office, now twelve, I've never...
Never happened.
Can you ever help? I don't think this has ever come up.
But if someone had an axe to grind about a particular program or something, you don't want them to have that kind of power. They shouldn't have.
That's what... that's the way I see it.
You know, so I would support that. Anything from the guys? Alicia?
I agree with Gene. I'm in my notes. I just think it gives one person the power.
Sounds like a valid argument.
Jeff, I think it's a good idea. Damon?
Yeah, I misread it when I read it, and I thought it was about any, the two-thirds vote of the towns, which allows one town to stop something. So I misunderstood where this was aimed. And so my initial reaction was, no, I think it's okay for towns to be able to say, no change.
Well, it is. One person, I mean, yeah.
Yeah. And so that's...
One person.
I just misread the section, and so now I'm trying to adjust my thinking to that reality of what this is actually asking for.
And I actually was with you on that.
Yeah. And if I could just also add, on the final paragraph, there's some language in there for the term second-tier administrative staff. That's just to fall in line with statute about what is the committee's purview and what is the superintendent's purview.
Why is it... Looking at the amount of confusion that was in the text, might be a good idea to clean it up.
Yet people making that...
But it's just being a mistake, okay? JR, where are you?
I was understanding it wrong, I have to say.
And obviously, if three intelligent people are looking at it and not grasping what the hell it's saying, then... So we're gonna give this a thumbs up?
That's the concept, right?
There's a potentially...
Some suggestion about the language.
Yeah.
Some link to changes.
And I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't part of the whole exercise is to clean this up? Does the language in this up and make it in line with the...
Absolutely.
Okay, so on the next page, section four, facilities, capital development, and renewal plan. So this one is, this is a new section to reflect expectations regarding developments in capital development plan. But I think the district wants to have something similar to what the town has, a capital improvement or capital planning committee? Yes. The district, this will develop a capital planning committee, and I think that's enough.
I would say establishes a committee establishes a requirement to plan.
Okay.
So my guess is we'd have to the finance committee and purpose committee myself.
So they'll have a capital planning document, if we have.
I would agree with that. I think anything we know about future capital costs would be...
Yeah.
Absolutely. Definitely, we think that plays in.
Significant need. I think we're all agreeing that it's a valuable tool to have. I don't know what that...
That's my...
This is my...
The next blue box is under capital costs. The first blue box is a text, they're gonna restructure the text to clarify distinctions between elementary and secondary schools. I think that goes, that's part of what I said, they're gonna clean up a lot of the, make it, organize it easier to read. The next section is a new section, which is a landlord-tenant agreement. So in this one, they need a working group, and you, I believe we signed Tracy up for that, Roger? And...
What is the...
Yeah, I missed that.
What is the working group consisting of?
The DCC met in the request of the chair was one selectman, one member of the finance subcommittee, and then town administrator-manager. So, and then we would have folks, obviously, from our office in the committee working together.
We're probably lying.
Okay.
He's not here.
Not because he's not here.
Not just because he's not here.
No, we... He's not working. He's working. You guys missed it. And this is to go into all the things that we would discuss in...
Yeah, and I think...
Funding costs could slip in under there, everything else.
Um... And I say, no. That'll come later. You can add up, absolutely.
Jeff said.
But the... I mean, the concept is to have, again, like I said briefly at the beginning, because there are different arrangements with the different towns, especially at the elementary level, clearly articulating what the district pays for and what the towns would pay for as far as capital payments and capital improvements. You know, at this point, if there was a way to... the fact that the district owns Salisbury Elementary is, my understanding, again, on paper exercise, was that it was, the district had a better bond rating, and so there's a 99-year land base. For all intents and purposes, it functions no differently. You just have to ensure the building because we own the debt, we have to own the structure. But we could agree just, you know, universal elementary funding arrangements, just so that everyone's on the same page, so we can't say, well, Salisbury has it this way, Newbury gets this.
So say Salisbury needs a roof, does the district pay for the roof, or do the towns and people Salisbury pay for the roof?
As it stands right now?
Yeah.
The district pays for it.
And if Newbury Elementary needs a roof, would we pay for it?
No.
No, no.
No, because the town owns that. So right now, the Pine Grove...
We would pay for it.
We pay for it.
As members of the town of Newbury...
For Raleigh?
The town of Newbury would pay for it.
No, for Newbury.
For Newbury.
For Newbury, I'm sorry. I heard Raleigh. Sorry. Yes.
Different song?
Yes, JR, sorry. Different day of the week.
So that's why it's...
So isn't the agreement everything exterior? We pay for everything interior, you pay?
Logical assumption, yes. That's not documented anywhere.
That's all... as we put it in the, like, it's been handed down, old wives' tale is that it's blanked. It's part of that lore.
It'd be down, okay.
So it's just a matter of, I think, I don't think anyone's gonna disagree with the concept. Let's just get everyone on the table, put it on paper, have it, and then there's no debate.
You're solving.
All right.
Is it intentional to have the lease agreements as part of the regional agreement document, or would they stand alone?
So whether it's a lease agreement, other experience, or just however it is, my hope with that would be separate because that makes it a whole lot more easy to update. As part of the regional agreement, you're going up to the state level.
I don't think it should be part of the agreement.
So it's a standalone this way. We can agree that, we could change it annually if we wanted to.
Reference it in the agreement.
We don't. Yeah. So the requirement is we have that working document.
And Tracy's speaking to the fact, like Raleigh did, the town council and other things, and that would be a way in for... All right.
So Jeff, are you gonna... you want to sit on that committee, right?
We are going to sit on it.
He's the one.
Now, things go.
One clarification I need is this insurance thing. When the district doesn't own, or does own the building, the district pays for the insurance cost. I thought it was, I thought it was, everything was equalized somehow, even though Salisbury was separate, that Salisbury would somehow be assessed for the insurance cost. That's not true.
So we...
So we're all gonna still pay for a share of the insurance cost?
As of right now, it's disproportionate. Part of this would, I think that's an easy discussion. That is, we put that on paper, and then we have that discussion. But we don't have the vehicle on paper to have that discussion.
It's probably not as much of an issue now, but let's say as that school gets older, we haven't come up against that yet, just like JR said, with a roof, should Salisbury need a roof, that would become a little disproportionate.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, as we discussed earlier, plowing or anything, there's lots of little things that go into, whether you own a building or don't own a building, pays for all of it that I feel builds up the inequity that makes this important to get squared away. Yeah. And to that point, we've actually, the towns are plowing the elementarys now. At one point, the district was paying for Salisbury to be cleared out, and as you know, it's a deep, it's a deep lot. So where we could, we've kind of worked it to make it more equitable. I think we're at the point now, we just need it on paper. To your point, all those assumptions that we've made for decades, just put them on paper.
Yeah, I think what we need to look at is, you know, with the existence movement and everything else, and Brian now at the helm, this is getting done, I think that's great.
Yeah, I don't wanna take credit. I mean, this was, it's been a lot of work.
You know, it's here now.
It's here. It's here. But as of July, I was here, so it's, yeah. I'm not gonna take all the credit.
The school committee did do a lot of work.
The committee did.
Which I mentioned.
Yes. Early on.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. This was a... Who's the reason why we...
The next one, oh, yeah. Capital, the next one is D, apportionment of capital and operating costs. So this one here, is each member's... do you want me to read it, or do you want to just speak to it, Brian?
So let me say this. So as it stands now, what we've basically done is a little semantics to clean up the language to make it read better. We have not proposed, the only change is proposing a rolling average. But again, the rolling average for enrollment, as it stands in here, which people keep referencing as being positive, is, I need a whiteboard for the lesson on the budget. So you remember, two of them pays their minimum, and then the amount above minimum, north or south of $5 million, is divided based on enroll. As this stands, right now, it's based on just your October 1 count. We're proposing a rolling average. Helps mitigate some of the enrollment change, but it's only on that small portion. What we've had the discussion, and a lot of discussion, it's fair to say, around the finance subcommittee, is coming up with a completely separate funding methodology because our regional agreement documents the state formula. So the two-step method, that is what is in statute, that is what is in our agreement. So it means we have no option. So worked really well last year for Newbury. Salisbury, Raleigh literally paid their assessment with 75% of our total increase for last year's budget. So you have these swings that we can't control. All we can control is the operating expenditures, and then we are subject to the formula.
Just a little bit of clarity. Was Raleigh's 75% due to the enrollment?
So loaded question. Yes, and...
No.
The state formula.
Right.
So absolutely.
Because we were captured.
Yep.
I mean, we're enjoying, you know, we're enjoying the fact that, well, if it's enjoying or not enjoying, we don't have as many students in right now.
Absolutely.
And we've reached, is it the 80% or whatever, of the foundation cost? Gene's always trying to explain this to me, and it's always hard for me to grasp, but I have a little bit of an understanding. So I mean, it's gonna be hard as a political leader of Newbury to wanna pass on more costs to the taxpayer. So, and you chose five as a rolling assessment, and you could've chosen three, too. So there's a lot of different years. There's a lot of different things in this. And that was, I didn't mean to load that question up here, but it's not always the amount of students that makes someone like the town of Raleigh pay more.
Correct. So you referenced 80, so it's 82.5. So every town wasn't supposed to pay more than 82.5% of their foundation. Something like 200 and some odd were paying above that.[1722.41] Something like 200 and some odd were paying above that, Newbury was in that category. So, every time the state funds effort reduction at a higher amount, your minimum local goes down proportionately lower. So, is it enrollment? Yes, because enrollment drives the formula, as does all the other state indicators, and your property values, and your, so your equalized valuation in your median income. But, as you all know, there's so many other indicators that are loaded. So, this, so again, the proposal here literally just adds the five-year rolling average.
This is just for capital expenses right now, just for-
Capital and operating.
Oh, let's see, okay.
That's the whole-
As far as this part here, the operating.
The language that I'm saying, but it's just capital and operating costs.
And operating costs is grossed off.
Each member's touching the capital, operating costs.
Right on there. Oh, that's a typo.
I thought it was just, I thought, I thought we, in our district communication meeting, we were gonna just talk about the capital expenditures and not-
The heading says both, but the language says one.
Right.
But the agreement has to reflect the total.
But don't you, don't you remember that we discussed this in the district communications subcommittee meeting, and we talked about just testing the waters with the capital and see if we like that before we do operating? Was that, did I, I didn't dream that, right?
There was some discussion on that.
Yeah, yeah. And right now, capital, so that's a semantics issue. Capital is based on just enrollment. So, we could, like you said, we could try the same thing, do the five-year rolling average on capital. I guess if you're gonna do a five-year rolling average on capital, but different on the-
That's confusing.
That's confusing. So, if we wanted to test the five-year rolling average, without it, again, I go back to, without a change of the overall calculation, that the impact is gonna be very minimal, because you're talking about a change in how we portion just a very small percentage.
Right. You mean the step two is a very small-
Yeah, those of you involved, step two.
Yeah, what is that roughly total?
North or south of five million.
About five million.
So, you know, I, as we, so, I mean, this is, this would be an exercise-
If it's so small, why are we doing it?
Well, again, so we proposed, I love, feel free if y'all, either wanna jump in. I mean, we proposed it as a, as a step. My goal is that the, my, I would dream about the day that the three towns could come up with an agreement around a funding formula that takes the state out of it. So that you, Raleigh, and Salisbury are in control of how that budget is apportioned each year, so that we can get predictability, we can get consistency. You know, so this would be, for us to do that, it has to be an exercise in very proactive, long-term thinking. Because, obviously, as you said, to, to, to change something that would potentially increase your assessment now, when things are trending well for you, obviously Raleigh right now would really love to think about something other than the way it's worked. But when you have, you know, I'm doing some statistics for the budget, when you have our operating costs increasing 47% over the last 15 years, 2002 to 2017, 47% of the costs have increased. The town assessments have increased 82%. The state's Chapter 70 formula has given the towns over, it's 4.3% less Chapter 70 this year than we had 15 years ago. Three million dollars less, I'm sorry, 300, no, 360,000 less than we had 15 years ago. And inflation's at, what, 34% over those 15 years. So, it's, it's a formula that the state can't catch up with, they cannot. I can tell you, I, maybe I'll get in trouble with someone at the state, they can't catch up with it, they can't. Unless they find $5 billion.
We actually had talk of the fact that the original agreement for the regional school with the state, their contract side of that hasn't been honored at all.
Absolutely.
And then the only entity that we really know, I suppose the federal government can do it too. You know, we have to honor our contracts, but they don't have to honor this.
Yeah, absolutely. Right. And it's, you know, when I was looking back at the enrollment, the increase in the two, the fiscal 2002 budget was within about $5,000 for each of the member towns. It was a big year in 2002. And each town went up about 395,000 15 years ago. And it was literally, everyone's, every town's assessment was in 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 of each others. So, when this regional agreement was, when we fully regionalized, things were different. Towns were more the same size. And so, now you've got huge disparities and a formula that doesn't recognize and account for that. So, I'm not saying, Nerissa has spent, I don't know how many hours, when I get emails out of my inbox, 2:00, 1:00 in the morning, creating regional agreements, but, you know, 40, 30, 50 regional agreements that she's reviewed to look at other ways of calculating the assessment. And it puts the control in your court, so that we could say, okay, it may mean this, it may mean a slightly higher, but we know for five years, it's not gonna change. Other than, you know, obviously there, there depends on the, the formula, but. So, for me, that's the dream, the dream that all three towns could agree a formula. I know that's a tall order, because there's always gonna be-
That sounds like another working.
Yeah. So, can I ask a question, Nerissa, how many, you looked at, I know you spent a lot of time on this. How many other cities and towns, or towns, have funding agreements that are not the two-step?
So, there's a fairly significant number of the ones I looked at, but the key is that some of them, so, if you have an alternative calculation in your regional agreement, and you decide you simply don't wanna use it, then you default back to the minimum local contribution, the state calculation. There are a number out there, and that's where it gets hard to quantify, that have an alternate calculation built in, but every year, they're simply using minimum local contribution, because at some point, they default into that, and that's become their, their way of operating.
I get a question myself. I sat in on the, when we went to this two-step, it was either '04 or '05, and we had a contract between all of the towns, they decided to go with the two-step. I specifically asked them, once we go to this, what is to stop it from going back, whatever you wanna do? And I was told at that meeting, once we go to two-step, there's no changing it. Was I informed wrong?
By state law, as long as all, if it's part of the regional agreement, and as long as all three towns agree at town meeting, and the commissioner agrees, and the school committee is on it.
So, I was told wrong.
So, we can't change it easily, it can be changed, but it's redoing the regional agreement.
And it has to be within the regional agreement, though, Chuck, that might be where the confusion lies. Like Nerissa said, in the ones that she-
I asked that pretty slyly, because I was worried about flopping back and forth.
Right.
That was my concern, and that's what I was told right there at that meeting, and it was right at Triton. And I think it was Vinnie and Joe who said to me, so. As I say, I just have a concern with that, it's all silly.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Has anybody run the numbers, if this was applied retroactively, what would that have changed? These current assessments would have been helped for Raleigh's situation?
We've played with, yes, different scenarios. We haven't, so, yes, over the years, and so, two years ago, I produced quite a few documents that looked at simply going purely on enrollment. So, take the full amount that we would assess the towns, 28 million and change this year, and dividing it based on enrollment, and then what it would mean using the two-step method. And there were some disparities, some towns make out well, others don't. The problem, where we landed with the finance subcommittee in looking at this, and then with the full committee, was there are so many options, don't even know where to start. And we said, okay, let's pause, let's, let's start with a small step, throw in the five-year rolling average, and when we're at the table, make sure that the three towns are committed to this, because it's gonna be a lot of work and a lot of time. But if the three towns are committed to it, it's worth it. If the three towns are not committed to it, then we move on, and we have to live by the state, the state formula. So, and right now, that's working well, so I get it, for you all. But in three, four years' time, it may not be.
So, what's, what's the, what's in it for us if we decide to change? Just, just budget predictability over time, anything else?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to say, because I don't know what the formulas look like, but the, the the goal going in would be predictability in a formula that allows you to be able to control and not be subject to what the state, what they fund. We can only do that because we're spending above our foundation budget. You know, we're, we're spending so far above the minimum locals, that's why we could do this. If we were, if, if the towns weren't spending at, at or above the minimum locals, you would have to pay at least that amount. But, I forgot, again, this is, it's like 296 of the 351 communities are spending above the minimum local, because the foundation budget is so deflated, it hasn't kept up over time.
To be honest, Brian, I mean, you're a breath of fresh air, not that we, the previous administration's weren't, but coming here, getting down and dirty, and talking with us, and answering questions, it's great. But, I'm a little lost as to what you just went through, as we're held captive by the state formula. How would changing the way we assess enrollment, we're still gonna be just as captured?
No, because, so we can, I'm not proposing this, literally not proposing this. I know where you're gonna go. To go like crazy, you could say, Newbury's gonna pay the whole assessment, every year. You're pretty sure it would pass in Raleigh and Salisbury. And I'm pretty sure the commissioner would say, great, if that's what you all want, super. So, you can get as creative, we can get as creative and crazy and, you know, whatever works for Triton, as we wanna get. Right now, the default is what we have in the agreement. So, if we have something else in the agreement, that allows us to use that vehicle. If not, you don't ever lose the default of the state method.
It's always called after that.
So, you can always, because that's in statute, so that's always there. Our, our being hucked tied is because the stat, that our fallback matches our agreement. So, option one and option two are the same.
So, what's to stop a town from falling back to the default any time any new proposed agreement would cost them more?
Nothing.
That's what hap, that's what I think Nerissa was speaking to, that's what happens.
Yeah, that's what happened. It would be up to the, to the school committee and the district at that point to make sure that, even if there's some variation, that it would be a fairly equitable variation going on year after year. It's going to be that situation where you know that you're simply not going to get your three votes if you don't have something that works for everybody, and you're going to have to have something that, that really works. There's gonna be some ups and downs, but it's gonna have to work long-term.
But right now, we don't even have the option to try that. So, if, if a year worked out, and, I don't know, whatever it was working for the towns, if it's not the state formula, we can't do it right now. Where we could, if we knew all three towns would support it, we can do, and again, it makes things, it makes things more complicated. So, what happens if we think we've got it, and two of the three pass it, and it fails? Well, we then go back and we recalculate on the two-step method, and we have to bring it back to you.
It's funny, it's hard for us right now, when we look at the projections of the use of our real estate and the people that are purchasing houses in the town of Newbury, it seems that our enrollment's continuing to get down. So, it's hard for us to think in a different way, especially when we have such capital costs coming our way too. So, I mean, this is almost like a time for us to make hay, to get stuff done.
Yeah.
So.
And I, let me say this, I think anything that would be agreed is not gonna be agreed quickly. And then you're talking, it would have to be, anything that we would agree now, and it's not gonna happen before May of 18, right? So, if that was agreed in 18, the commissioner would then have to agree. So, we're talking about 19 or beyond, if it were even to ever, and I don't think this is a three-month discussion. So, I think the question is, are the towns willing to have the discussion? And if the three towns say, sure, we're willing to have some debate, if we can see some, some options, then, then it's worth our time and energy to produce some options.
Well, it seems to me that part of the problem is always gonna be disparity in the towns. If the towns were all equal in demographics, and income, and growth, and all that stuff, it would be one thing, but it's not that way. Salisbury's clearly different. I mean, they're building a lot of multifamily housing over there and so forth, they're growing. Just, yeah, and we're different, we're shrinking, and, and we're losing students, you know, so why?
We registered 17 new students at Newbury Elementary since the beginning of the school year.
Is that right?
Really?
A record, as far as I can remember.
Yeah, might be all an old firm went.
I'm telling you where they're coming from.
Well, they're recycling.
Yeah.
They're recycling, that's happening.
So, I think we just have to decide if this is something that we, we wanna close the door on, and we wanna say, nope, I like the two-step, I'm gonna stay with only our two options, and that's it. Or if we wanna say, well, if we wanna come to the table, and let's look at an alternative.
Well, it seems to me that, in the current formula, the step two only really applies to the overage, the step two portion, which you said is kind of around 37 million. I mean, it's not that big a deal. And, you know, I, my first question was, should be three years or five years? I don't think that makes that much difference.
But that is a question that's a force, I mean, the question is force, I think, is one which is-
Do we wanna even engage in this type of discussion?
As I'm understanding, understanding, if there is discussion, and a different plan is arrived at, it's agreeable to three towns, even going forward.
Well.
If any one town says, it doesn't work for me this year, then you could go with the default, right, stating that right?
Yeah.
I think, Gene, if, without speaking at all, sort of just myself, I mean, I think if I felt right now that I would be no change, that could reflect the fact that I don't see anything I like.
That's majority, fuck me.
And that would stop the fact that there couldn't be more explorations for some other way that would work, maybe for me anyway, a little better. So, I don't think you have to look back and say that I feel no change, but now that doesn't mean that I wouldn't be open to something that I had a better, you know, vision within this.
Do you think it's worth taking a look, see it?
Now, right now, I'm no change, just for me. And how, what do you guys think?
I, I'd edge my bets on dropping enrollment numbers, I don't see it wise for us to change right now.
But could we have, is it possible that if we had dropping, the, and maybe this is, this is a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway.
No stupid questions.
Is it, is it possible that even though we, we have declining numbers, enrollment numbers, is it possible that if we go to an alternative formula, that the town of Newbury maybe, may pay even less than what they paid before?
Yeah, I would say that's certainly a possibility, sure.
Because you're Roman's Bobby, you want your straight enrollment.
Right, right.
You could, I don't know, you don't know.
So, I mean, I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you guys are thinking that if we make any changes, automatically it's gonna cost us, cost us more.
Well, let's-
I'm not sold on that.
Well, let's, let's think of what Gene said.
It's possible.
You're never gonna get straight enrollment out of the three towns.
No, but-
So, that's not, that's not gonna work. So, like I said, there could be other methods, for sure. I mean, right now, for us, although you did have 17 new students, I mean, enrollment's a little bit of a lightning rod for the town of Newbury.
Yeah.
When you talk to people in the community that realize that we're putting, you know, less kids in the system.
Well, I don't- The fact that any one town could, we could go through all this effort to make a change, and then a town could say, oh, you know, we lost 20 students this year, so to hell with that agreement, we're going back to the old way.
That's my field.
That's, that's the problem.
It just, to me, I don't feel like investing a lot of time and energy in a new program when it could be dropped at the first sign that it is economically beneficial for a town to go back to the old way. So, I guess I'm, I'm pretty good to say about this.
Well, one of the reasons might be helpful, why the change was made originally to MLC, or to enrollment, as the state counts it, was in 2005, I think it was. The enrollment wasn't being counted properly, I mean, enrollment was not including choice out. And Salisbury had many more choice out kids than we had, and, or vice versa. And, and this is, wasn't fair, it wasn't being computed properly. And so, it was changed to the current method to rely on the state's, the state's definition of enrollment, which is October 1 of every year. You might argue with that, because there's a lot of transience that goes, goes on during the year. But nevertheless, that's the way it was, why it became the way it was. And even applies now, even to the step two portion, right?
Yeah, when it's foundation enrollment.
So, the foundation enrollment.
Yeah, foundation enrollment, right. Have we covered that enough?
So, so Jeff's gonna be a happy face or sad face? You don't wanna make any changes to it?
Go with a straight line. Things sort of frowned.
Yeah.
I'll make it a straight line.
I didn't ask Chuck, so we can make it a real dog smiling face.
Then-
No, no, no.
The next, the next one is on, now, these are, these are that number, I'm sorry. Section- Oh, section six, the old section five, the new section six of the budget. It changes just these numbers, you can put it in line with how Brian does his budget for simplicity, correct?
Same, I do too.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, the state budget too, so we can all understand. And then this was, um, a question for Tracy. This, this one will remove the obligation to develop a tentative budget by mid-February, confirm the use of the ESC expenditures categories and provide February twenty-eighth due date. Oh, now this is for the school, this is the school committee. They wanna provide a tentative budget by February twenty-eighth.
So just to clarify, right now, the agreement says that they, there needs to be a vote on a tentative budget by the twelfth.
Yeah.
And we have to certify it to you by the twenty-eighth. So the suggestion is, strike the vote by the twelfth, we still have to certify it to you by the twenty-eighth.
And does that process go to the next great block and kind of back up the fifteenth to the thirtieth too? Is that a process that kind of goes hand in hand?
In theory, yes. I would still say, taking out the February twelfth is helpful, even if, even if there was no agreement to move it from fifteen to thirty.
Okay.
Taking out the twelfth is still helpful, because, you know, this year, where we came back to you and said, okay, if we move back one week with our committee's workshop on Saturday, we'll have the governor's budget tomorrow, we got some healthcare guidance today. So every day, we can get some new information that's helpful. So, so without changing the certification of the tentative by the twenty, from the twenty-eighth, taking out the twelfth is still beneficial. Even if, obviously, we would love to have until March thirtieth for the final budget. That would certainly be helpful for us.
I mean, that, for me, this is, Tracy, it's gotta be more for you. Do you, is this move on the twenty-eighth, does that disturb you at all?
No, it doesn't disturb me. I mean, we've, we've moved our town meeting earlier. So obviously...
The thirtieth's tighter.
So it makes it tighter, but throughout the budget process, the school committee and the superintendent will be apprised of everything that's going on. So, so we have numbers, we may not have the final number, but we know.
The first thing I've been certifying on February twenty-eighth isn't really an issue at all. And maybe we gotta talk about the thirtieth, so...
And I can, I can tell you, that's a problem for Raleigh, they've already stated that.
Yeah.
The thirtieth is a problem for them. They, they stated at the table that they would be okay with...
A year to year, right?
Exactly, determining year to year, but a blanket.
The longer you can, the more times they have, the more accurate information will be.
Yeah, right.
All right, so why don't we skip right over that?
Why don't we skip over this one?
Yeah.
So you're okay with the tentative budget?
Yeah.
Folks are okay with that?
I mean, I didn't ask, you guys, you okay with the twenty-eighth?
As long as it's not gonna mess with our budget process too badly. And I know that I was one of the people who pushed for moving town meetings, so as long as it's okay with FinCom and the town administrator, I'm fine with it.
Yeah?
Same here, if it doesn't ground just too hard, I have no problem with it. Good information.
Thank you, it was all good, good, thank you.
And we're gonna skip over this much fifteenth, because Raleigh can't have it, right?
Yeah.
Establishes, so the next section is section C, so certification of abortion men. So this establishes the right of a representative of the school district to address a town meeting at which the school district's budget is to be discussed. So, right now, who presents your budget to us? You guys do, right? You guys, does the finance committee present the school budget to us?
At town meeting?
Yeah.
As an article.
It's, it's by line on item in the operating budget.
Okay.
But typically, I think what happens right now is that they recognize, moderator usually on the floor recognizes somebody to come up and who is not a representative.
Reads up the name in the beginning.
But this would be...
So this establishes the right of a representative of the school district to address the town meeting, so...
I don't think, I don't think Raleigh was hot on this one either, right?
I think it was Salisbury, correct if I'm wrong, because it went against their charter.
That's what I'm, I'm reading.
So, I think the spirit is an opportunity for the committee or the superintendent or someone to speak to the budget. Good in theory.
We would never not recognize...
And I don't think it's, I don't think it's ever been a problem.
Right.
But it's just potentially ten years, fifteen years from now, I don't know.
This is one of those, because we're going through, hey, let's correct this.
But it's not a huge...
Not a...
So we're gonna pass on this one?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a problem.
And I think, towards the end. So this one is under section fourteen, the annual report. This recognizes the need for the town to identify what kind of annual report will be, will be helpful. So, you guys, this is between you and Tracy.
The spirit behind the discussion was, we produce a town report for each of the member towns, and each of the member towns like different information. If we could produce an annual report and provide it to you, that, or provide it to the towns and it satisfies the requirements of all the towns, so that would be great.
Seems like a really reasonable request.
Reasonable request.
Yeah.
I'll say, that's...
It doesn't seem unreasonable.
I'm amazed it's not there.
Right. So, so again, I don't think it needs to be a working group, but if, you know, if I could work with Tracy and Neil and Debbie to say, okay, what does your town report require? You can put it together.
It should be consistent, because if people are talking about it also, if it's a report that's publicly available, if it reads different from what comes Salisbury says, this and mine doesn't say that, I...
Sometimes it's a year in advance and not, so...
Oh, yeah, no.
Consistency would be good. Get it on our website, your website, your report.
I think we're gonna go with the smiley face.
That's a smiley face. Okay, and on the next page, this is the, right now, the school committee has a subcommittee, which is the district communications subcommittee, which I sit on, along with Gene and Frank. And anybody else who'd like to join me.
I was gonna say, it's not a subcommittee, right? It's not a standing subcommittee. It's just a separate committee.
A separate committee, okay.
Generally, most of them, yeah.
All right, so right now, I think the dis, the school committee sets the agenda, the school committee sets the dates, and then we meet first time, and we talk about, and we all agree on dates. I think the language in this document is gonna propose a broader, more inclusive membership and clar, and it will also clarify who's the responsibility for calling the meetings. So in other words, I think it's been said in the past that, you know, schools done things that we have known about and by certain, but some of the towns. And this will provide a vehicle for if any three, any one of the three member towns feels as if they need to speak to the district and they wanna go, they can call it. So we don't have to wait for the district to call it. You, if you're a member of this, you can call it at any, any time. Now, who comments is another story, but...
I was gonna say, even since this agreement was proposed, this year, the DCC, the discussion has been even making it a, I mean, thrown ideas like a rotating meeting the towns and different chairs. So the concept behind this language, again, this is now a year old, was making it more, a more inclusive committee than it's the district committee. It's not Newbury Committee, it's not a school committee committee. It's, it's the towns and the school committee working together to have a formal structure where we're meeting routinely to have discussion, to have dialogue, and you're hearing from other towns and we're hearing from you, so...
I like it.
It's not a new entity, it's documenting the, saying it should be one selectman, one member of FinCom, town administrator, or... Can you do it?
What are you into?
Putting it into the, putting it into the, into the agreement.
So this, this communication committee is, Brian, is still a communication committee.
Yes. Say that first part, it's still a communication committee, absolutely.
I don't wanna say that, but you're just making it more inclusive.
Yeah, and so to confirm, this, this committee can't have any decision-making authority.
It has no authority.
Right. So it's still committee votes and sends it to the towns for selection, whatever. Purely an exercise in communicating, ring one.
All right.
All right, I like that. Do we have a yes? Can I have a thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay, and on the next section, oh yeah, so this last section is that, this, this requires a regular review of the agreement. So right now, as you can see in the very first page, the original agreement was adopted in nineteen sixty-six. It was amended in nineteen ninety-three, so what's that, thirty-three years later?
That was, that was full regionalization.
Okay, thirty, so then we, again, in ninety-seven, and then it wasn't touched again till two thousand and six, and now we're in twenty seventeen.
It's only been ten years.
It seems like we should probably be waiting another... I was gonna say, we're in the process of reviewing it for ten years, so...
So this, this new section will require a regular review of the agreement. I think you was saying five years or, if, if necessary, by circumstances or statute, we can always change it. But at least every five years, we'll be sitting down looking at it and saying, does this work, does this not work? I think it's a good idea.
I can say that when we were in sort of, when we were actually bringing people off and were in real trouble, we wanted to actually have some review of things, and it was hard to get it going. So every five years, in my estimation, is a good idea.
And then if we needed to, you could call it earlier too, Jeff. Right. You can request it in town if you have anything to say. Beth, thumbs up.
Yeah.
Dana and Deah?
Yes. That was great.
Now, Brian, thank you so much for being there.
Sticking around.
Do you have some information you'd like to tell us?
No.
Yes.
I just, I just wanna, I just wanna, just give a few minutes. Eric and I are going to put together some sort of an illustration for, especially in terms of numbers, in terms of impact. I think it's important to know the data that we're using for this illustration.
Okay.
It's changed from October.
You mean it would've been cheap if we did this before?
And we've had Southwest, our financial advisor, run some numbers. We're looking, of course, still at six point five, no. We're using, for purposes of illustration, a four point five percent interest rate. In October, we use two point eight.
Wow.
Wow. We are looking...
Can you say that line again?
We are, we are looking at thirty years, which is a... And the impact on the tax rate will be about thirty cents per thousand, using, using those numbers. If you look at the impact on the average home, it's gonna be about a hundred and forty-four dollars. Now, we're using four point five, I think, primarily because it's, I hesitate to say worst-case scenario, but I think we, we're, we're being conservative in terms of the number. There are some things that obviously could change once, once you go out. You know, you could, you could, well, just the simple bands that may be used early on, it might change a little bit upfront. We might get a lower rate. Um, we might wanna look at, um, we might wanna look at twenty years potentially at some point. That would, that might change the actual yearly impact, but it might save some money in the long run. So we're gonna use, those are the numbers we're gonna use.
And certainly, they're honest, transparent, no one...
Exactly, and that's why I thought it was important for everybody here to know that that's what we're gonna do.
The assumptions we're running under right now is...
Assumptions we're gonna be running and...
And it shows the cost of waiting.
Exactly, a little bit.
Actually, it was, it would've been about a hundred and twenty dollars on the average.
Which means it's a little, it's a lot, and it's time to get going.
We, we don't anticipate using, in this model, we don't anticipate using free cash.
Right.
We're at a point where we think that, um...
Meter.
Can we hold that for, until we, until we, until we make sure it's right? And we had used free cash to mitigate some of the impact, but we're looking at stuff now coming down the road where free cash is gonna become more important.
And the six point five is a compromise too.
And six point five is a, is a margin.
Right. So I have a question.
Yes.
There was a, we got an opportunity, but one point with the USDA, is that still minimal?
It's three point seven five at the moment.
So even that two point eight is now gone, because it's three to seven five now.
Three point seven five, we're using four point five for purposes of illustration.
And we're not, anything's, you know, anything that's lower, we're gonna look at.
Right, oh yeah, sure. But I think it's fair to let people know, potentially, this is the kind of a landmark, and...
And it's irresponsible not to tell them.
Right, yeah. Could be two years before we do this, so, things are more fluid. Things are more fluid. So I just wanted to pass that information on so everybody's on the same, same page.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I would like to really thank the finance committee for coming tonight, and, you know, so many of you coming is great, so it's great.
And I just wanna speak to this agreement again one more time. I think that, I think it's good that we're all looking at it, and I really am glad the finance committee came. I think, I think it will strengthen our school, and in turn, it will strengthen us as a town, so, thank you.
And Brian, I just wanted to say, you in the school committee now seems to be a team that I can speak frankly with, and I appreciate that.
Anytime, door's always open.
And while we're on the subject of slapping each other on the back. If you try to turn around, if you take...
I forget what you're doing.
A broad look at the town of Newbury right now, I would say our elected boards, boards and committees, planning board, all the boards that we've worked with, conservation commission, I have never at any time seen a high level of cooperation in the town of Newbury. And that's, we've all done that, that's all a result of everyone, so I think we should be very proud.
So we should be counting ourselves.
That's right.
I need to get you back.
All right, thanks, thanks, guys.
Thank you, brother.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Deah, thank you, thank you, our pleasure.
Let's take two minutes, guys.
Only you buy them. Jeffrey, this was in Newbury. You couldn't have put them in. You think I'm kidding?
Let's go. Right now, my cookie break is in the way of talking. Okay. I can get to this quickly so I can finish my cookie. Board and committee reports?
None.
Public hearings? None. Town administrator report?
Quickly, I just wanted to report to you that the new W, I used to knock it out of the park. Um, we cleaned out the wall at Central Street Playfield. I'm sure you've gone by notice. It looks amazing. That wasn't even on their list, but they, the weather's been holding out some opportunities to complete, um, a lot of additional projects. And they also opened up the right of way on Temple Boulevard, pedestrian access. So, um, and they will be, uh, working on, we've got landings, town landing, and they're gonna be helping clean up the Mariner Center as well. So, a lot going on there. Also, I had an opportunity to talk to John Higgins. You may remember you had a presentation by him relative to cleaning the algae out of the pond.
Yeah.
He's also going to work with us to address the algae in the pond at the landing. So, um, yeah. So, um, he's agreed to that, and, um, that should be happening soon. So, and I just wanted to remind everyone about town meeting next week.
Thirty-first?
Yeah, on the thirty-first.
And we got babysitting?
The school committee, yeah. I was just gonna make an announcement.
Child care, no babysitting. No infants, please. No diaper changing stations. But we have the kids, and we have the art room, and hopefully, I think it shouldn't be too long of a meeting. School age kids? School age kids, yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you, guys.
Parents can bring their kids to the meeting and they'll be taken care of.
Awesome. And that's, uh, that's, that's a real, that's a plus. Under new business, we have the appointment of Anthony and Tico.
Tico.
And to the human resources board, so the term of one twenty-four seventeen to six thirty nineteen. And you're a lawyer?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and tell us a little about yourself? Or you stand right there. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm, uh, still actively engaged in the practice of law, but I'm mostly retired. That's what he does.
Congratulations.
Yes, and, uh, been doing that, uh, for thirty-five years. And simultaneously with that, I, I was a teacher in the city of Boston for fourteen. So familiar with a lot of the discussion that has been going, going on here tonight. And simultaneous with everything, I had been in the, uh, the army national guard, mass army national guard, for about twenty-five years.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Recently retired out of that in eighty-seven. And, uh, I've met some tremendous people on the, on the resources board in the last few months. And I think I have the, the ability and hopefully the time to serve the town, and haven't had a chance to do that before.
Thank you for stepping in.
Thank you. Your pleasure. Thank you.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
That was pretty quick. That was easy. Appointment of Robin Williams from the media committee for the term of one twenty-four seventeen to six thirty seventeen. Robin's not here, but I would take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
This is in your packet, and I imagine you guys have read it. It's reviewed and approved and signed an entertainment license for the Pom Island Grill at Two Pom Island Turnpike. And the only thing I looked at when I saw it is that Sam okayed it. And that's good enough for me, so I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I wonder if we're gonna hear a lot of complaint from one of the other island businesses about the flexibility we're granting to one and not the other.
Why have we been flexible?
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, what they've, what they've asked for is some, the ability to do Thursday nights or Friday nights and Sunday afternoons, and we've granted them a, a different thing previously. So they've changed times. They want more flexibility. And I don't see any problem with it, but I just wanted to bring up that there may be some of our constituents who do have very boisterous opinions about it.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, because if it is the case, and it does weigh in on the case, but I believe the Pom Island Grill is sprinkled. I don't believe...
It is, yes.
They don't have to adhere to some of these strictnesses. So I hope, I mean, I would like to accommodate everyone, as you know.
Yep.
But they are sprinkled.
Well, I would like to be fair to everyone.
So, and when you're sprinkled and when you go out, you make the big expense of sprinkling, it changes some of the things you're doing.
Yeah.
So I'd forgotten what they were...
Just to be in fear of being legal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've, I've, I'd forgotten. I just wanted to get you on that. So it doesn't make it as owners. How's that?
Yeah.
The Byfield Community Arts Center.
We had to vote on this. I brought up discussion.
Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I'm trying to hurry because the meeting could be long. Byfield Community Arts Center, we have four of them. We'll do what we usually do. I will read them. If you wanna put a hold on, we'll take a motion at the end. One-day local license for Cat in the Cradle, Saturday, February eleventh, two thousand seventeen, from seven thirty P M. to ten thirty P M. One-day local license for the Local Lounge, Byfield Arts Center, February twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, to seven thirty P M. to ten thirty P M. One-day local license, Byfield Community Arts Center, Local Lounge, Saturday, February twenty-fifth, two seventeen. Seven thirty P M. to ten thirty P M. One-day local license, Byfield Community Arts Center, Cat in the Cradle Coffee House, Saturday, March eleventh, two seventeen, from seven thirty P M. to ten thirty P M.
Motion to approve.
Entertain a motion. Is there any discussion?
Do you guys wanna talk about something at all?
I just wanna say that I realize that I'm always remiss in, in not openly inviting all of you to any of our events. We really have some incredible entertainment coming up, and we'd love to have any of you come at our, as our guests to any of our events, so.
Thank you.
Ellen, I forget to ask sometimes, everything in order? Uh, thank you so much. Where are we? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same thing here. There are five things that are before us here, and I'll try to expedite it in the same fashion. The first two are to the estate of Stephen Van Doyen, who has passed, and he was a great guy. Old Newbury Boat Company, eighty-four, Newbury Port Turnpike. It is a general business for boat sales. Estate of Stephen Van Doyen. It is the same location, U S One Auto Marine. Newbury Auto Sales. It is, um, sixty Newbury Port Turnpike Motor Vehicle Class Three. Zachary Lewis, Lewis Antiques, eleven to fifty-one street, general business. Ralph Johnson, Lowell, um, um, Boat Company, Lambs End, Lanes End Auto Marine Boat Restoration and Sales. I would take a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ellen's gonna, I think, break in on this one a little bit, but it's a vote to approve the mortgage discharge for the property located on twenty-three Riverview Drive, and it is a separate loan that is paid in full. Are we doing something with the signature process on this? Does it take a motion and a vote to do that? So do we need two motions? All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the mortgage discharge.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would take a motion to give the signatory right on these mortgage discharges as they come forward to Tracy, our town administrator.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
How many of these do we have? Okay. You made it sound like there were a bunch coming down the pipe.
I can only do what I read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Brian, I promise you this will go, uh, quickly, and then you're up. But Peter Patino, the chair of the clam commission.
Yes, sir.
Do you have something for us?
Yes, we, um, we reworked the application for the commercial clams.
Can you come, this is kind of important. Can you come up a little closer and get you?
Close enough?
Yep, good. Thanks, Peter.
I hope you guys got a copy of that application. The warning came through, came from town council as far as, um, coming up as, you know, to qualify as a resident, and also as far as the tax money going to town. All that warning came through town council.
Are there a lot of changes in this from last year?
Yeah, it's a reworked document. The other one was old. It was, it had things on it like year makeup, social security number, I think.
Well, that's right, too. We changed a lot of that in the beginning, didn't we?
Right. So we got rid of that, and we just reworked this application. And, um, I think we tightened up the requirements on some things for, um, to show that you're a legal resident of Newbury's. And again, we went through the town council to do that. And where this is new, what we'd like to do is, uh, if we get an application that comes before the fish commissioners, it has a problem, and we'd like to, you know, we'll contact the clamor if I work with them. And if not, if it can't be worked out, then when we give it to you, we'll have a note out. You know, you make the final determination.
Uh, the only question I have is why you wanted to add the fish commissioner in?
Originally, I put that in, and then when we did it, it didn't go in. There is a little bit of blowback. You're talking about the Sunday openings.
Yeah.
So what happened, because two years, we've had it open on Sunday in the winter, and now we don't. We're getting calls, like, you're gonna open it this Sunday, you're gonna open it this Sunday. So we put Paul in there all by himself. He's the villain, you know, if he says no. But if we, we are the ones that dropped this forward, and we agree with, you know, trying to keep it as close as much as we can in the winter on Sundays. And hopefully, when the price is up in the summertime, you know, we'll be able to open it on some Sundays. So we're not trying to hurt anybody money-wise. But our, our flats are, they, they harvested less clams last year than the year before. That was just from the state. We're in a down cycle.
Even with the opening of the model?
Uh, we don't have that numbers yet, because that started in March. I'll get that at the end of the month.
Okay.
That's probably what we did. But, but on the clean flats, that's part of the reason that we closed it on Sunday is try to give the flats a chance to recover.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
It's funny that it's done to avoid a conflict, whereas I could see a conflict between, you know, I know you, you guys work well together, but I thought, oh, the, if you add the fish ward in there, he could just say, oh, I wanna close them because I'm annoyed with him.
No, I think we do it together that, you know...
I think that was a wise decision, where you're the elected official, and I think that was the right move.
Yeah. So we do it that way. And, and you can see that first paragraph on that, um, rules and regulations, and that's pretty much just residency requirements, and it's exactly the same that came off of the application.
Yeah, makes good sense.
And then the beauty one is, uh, you know, the seven, they have the state let us change the prorating on the commercial licenses for the contaminated flats. Uh, we used to have to prorate every month. Now they can all let us just do it like once a year, you know, halfway through. I know, we're trying to get rid of it completely, but I'm gonna do it.
Peter, under five, where the residents can clam on oxygen use, has it always been that, I'm not gonna say higher fee, but has that fee always been like the twenty-sixty-five, twenty-sixty dollars per year? Number five. Residents, uh...
The fee for such permit shall be twenty-two dollars.
Residents for our permit, for our residents to do...
Is a resident fee should be forty-five. The non-resident Massachusetts?
Oh, I got you. Good. Now, it sounds like a lot. Good. So where are we?
It should be resident.
I saw it, too, when I read it before.
Okay.
Forty-five dollars and seven dollars for one day.
So I'm putting this under the residents of Massachusetts from other towns.
Yeah.
Good. That makes better sense?
That's not changed, so it's the only thing we know.
It's good.
The highlighted things have been changed.
On number one, somebody moves here from out of town. They can't dig until they have a Newbury tax bill to show. Harry?
No.
You have a good one. Um... Regulations, so thank you so much.
Well, they can either show a state income tax form that has their name and address in Newbury on it, or they can show a property tax bill.
In Newbury?
Right.
But if somebody moves to town, they wanna dig, they're gonna have to wait till they have one of those things.
Yeah, it doesn't take very long to get a tax bill, right?
I just, I, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I find it, I just find it odd to help to furnish your income tax information to people.
We don't want their information. All we want is their name and address.
So they can adapt it.
You, you realize that two years ago, you had a gentleman show up before you. You prorated his license, and he wasn't a resident. We didn't find up till months later. If he, he had rented us, um, a place here at one point, and then moved out of town, and he still came before you, you got a license. So we're, we're trying to tighten up. We have four or five people probably that abuse the system. And, um, I'm going to take suggestions if you can find another way to do it. This was our idea. We'll see how it works out. You guys are in charge of the licenses. So if they come here and they move into town, they're gonna have to go before you anyway to get a license if they don't do it on time. And that was the other thing where we have changed this, that if somebody gets their license application in on time, and there's a problem, we waive the late fee because their application is in even though it hasn't been worked out completely.
So I have a question on this. Is it for their, for a, a Newbury resident, satisfactory proof? Is it, are these the only two-way, or that's what's up, up, up to us?
Well, it's always up to you.
Okay.
That's the two that we're looking at. We've changed it.
Because if you're a renter...
Yes.
And you, and you haven't filed your taxes yet, then you don't have a tax bill, and you don't have income tax.
Well, if you've lived here, you've filed the last year's taxes, right?
How long do you have to be a resident for? I'm sorry.
We took that out, but...
All right. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So...
And then they can come up, if, if we can't, if you can't prove they're a resident, they, the final determination is gonna be yours.
Okay.
Yeah, so anyone can always come to us and say...
We'll try and work through them. That's why I said that we'll take the applications. We'll put a note on it if we have a problem with it. Again, it always comes back to you folks.
Okay.
I think the reason Peter is being specific is the fact that this has been a little bit of a problem before.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't want that either.
They're trying to make it as specific to the problem as they can. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve changes.
Do we have a second? Now, do we wanna have discussion? Uh, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Pretty good.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we're back to you. And Brian? Brian is going to, and he's been so gracious. He's has some questions that he'd like to ask the board, and these questions that he has asked others... the board, and these questions that he has asked other selectmen, from other towns and finance committees and stuff, so I'll let you take it over, you kind of explain something, what you wanna get from.
Absolutely. So this, this is actually one of the last, trying to get on everyone's agenda, these started last September. I had met with boards of selectmen, finance up committees, town administrators, school committee members, parent groups, student groups, teacher groups, instructional assistant group, every, every classification employee within the district, had about fifty-seven meetings, and I'm asking the same eight questions as part of my entry planning process. The goal is to tease out what we believe as a community are the things we do well, where we need to improve, what are the things we hold near and dear. So I've asked the same questions of everyone. Certainly, you as selectmen have a very different experience than a parent who currently has three children in the schools at various levels. So I'm gonna ask you all the questions, you have no need to respond, if there's, don't feel pressured that you have to come up with a good answer.
Now, before, before, before you continue, can I say that this is something new? This superintendent has taken a long time to do it, he's taken a lot of effort to do this, and I think it's great, this is the kind of level of cooperation with the schools that I think is coming to a highest level that we've seen so far.
Great. And so the, the purpose is to, actually, the current goal is that along with the budget public hearing on March first, I will be presenting my findings. Was it Sir Arthur Conan Doyle, I'm not yet analyzing, and my first step is to put out the facts and make no assumptions yet. So that will be the, the opportunity, public hearing on the budget, also an opportunity for me to present to the community what I've heard. And the, my goal, proving incredibly challenging to go through all the four months worth of notes, is not to tease out what any one group thinks, so it's not what parents think, it's not what selectmen think, it's not what teachers think, it's what we as a collective community. So obviously, there's an incredible amount of information, and it varies depending on the group I'm with, so certainly, I have a wonderful data bank of information that I can use for my own, my own process in, in leading the district. But this is my formal entry planning process, so that, this was outlined in the fall, meetings have been happening since September, report out in March, beginning of March, and then hopefully, hopefully, it's a commitment, by the end of the year, start to develop some strategies, you know, we.
We, you mean?
End of the school year, sorry, not calendar year, not seventeen, but by the end of the school year. And again, we, we've had iterations of strategic plans in the district, strategic plans can often become a three-hundred-page document that sits on the shelf and gathers dust, I have no interest in a document that's not living and breathing. So I'm moving towards with the committee developing a kind of a theory of action and strategies that help us meet that, those, that fear. We've had a district development plan, I'm seeing this plan kind of taking over the district development plan and encompassing that, as well as having a more proactive and, and long-term view. So that's the, that's the thinking, again, there are no right answers, there are no wrong answers. So.
All the right one.
Yeah, all the right one. And so again, don't feel pressured, if you don't have an answer, there, there's, again, there are certainly questions that will not be pertinent to you perhaps, and you should not feel pressured, but I wanted to give every, literally every person who is in all the constituencies across the district, an opportunity to, to answer the questions and provide your feedback. So, does that sound good?
Excellent.
It will last the longest, I will say, it's been two hours and fifty minutes. I'm gonna go with, I don't think we're sending any records this evening, but just to put that out there in case you are competitive. So let's start with successes, what do you believe are the strengths and the successes of the training service?
Well, the first thing is that you're gonna help us with our, our town meeting, and I think that is fantastic. The stadium coming together clearly is another fantastic thing for our students and our community. So those are the two things that jump right out for me. But I don't have any kids in the school district, so it's very hard for me to isolate things.
I've spent some time, of course, before tonight, discussing past relations with people that were here before, a lot of it was contentious, so I think a strength now is opening the channels of communication, for sure, 'cause I think that's somewhat new, I think a lot of these discussions went down a real ugly road in the past from what I hear, and I think this is positive, you know, we're getting off on, yeah.
I think we're lucky to have a high school in, in our town, a regional high school, and when you have a high school that is accessible, I mean, I happen to go to a prep school, I went to Tilden Academy, and I had two children that were in the, in Triton School, and I can remember weighing, sending them to private school, and I'm very glad they went to Triton, it's a well-rounded education, I think one of the things that Triton does, and I hope they always do it, even when they feel the pressure, you know, when they feel the financial pressure to cut programs, and band was outstanding, you know, the arts, the languages, sports, so those things are important, there's always seems to be the core curriculum, I, I, I know core curriculum is important, but Triton would have not been half the experience for my children without especially band in sports, so. Guys?
This is my fourth term, this is the first one I've ever seen come up and put forth, one, the president, and two, putting the contract in understandable perspective for, you know, a, a double-wheeler like me, so I thank you for that, and to me, that's huge.
Well, I think that since you've taken over the budget process, that's been a lot clearer in trade and I think that's helped it go down. I think I have two children that went to Triton, I, I looked hard at sending them outside to private schools too, and I'm very glad that they went to Triton, I think they started kindergarten and they both graduated, and they had excellent experience there, I think it's a hidden jewel, and I think that, I think that its successes need to be yelled from the highest mountain, louder possibly.
Do you want me to keep hearing as many, he does sell Triton to Triton, and I think we need, it's, the concept of marketing for a public school is, is not comfortable, 'cause people think, you know, you, public schools shouldn't spend money on marketing, but the reality is, living in Massachusetts, or being in Massachusetts, in the land of private schools, with school choice alive and well, formal structure, charter schools alive and well, and being surrounded by other, our private schools, and some smaller, much more affordable ones than, than others, we do, we have to market, we have to market heavily and promote everything that goes on, so.
Hadn't thought of it that way, yeah.
Absolutely. When I, when my, when my stu, my children first started here, you know, the mindset was that, you know, Newbury Elementary is great, your kids will do fine at Newbury Elementary School, but don't send them up to that Triton, and Triton had a really big black eye on its face, and that was one big reason why I chose to get involved in the schools and I, for so many years, and I think the black eye has been wiped off its face, I really do, I think it, it may have been, you know, needed the black eye back in the day, but my children never had anything to rock to or found the administration, not only you, but other people, very, the door always open, and I, I don't know, I just think it's, I've had, I've had a successful experience with them.
And I will say, Alicia's kids are a little younger than mine, Triton's come a long way. Because.
I mean, I had a daughter, my daughter just presented before, a monetary issue before the Fed in Boston with her economics class, and she was up against, competing against kids from Dartmouth and, and Yale and Brown, and they, she competed, and that was in Triton, Triton a lot, so it was good.
Thank you for that. How about some of the challenges, couple key areas where you feel like.
You just said, market.
Well, having gone to the elementary school budget presentations, it seems like one of the challenges for Triton is certainly the, the inequity or the difference coming in of students, you know, Salisbury students face some different challenges than a lot of the Newbury students, and it even sounds like rallies and the different, you know, each, each elementary school is contributing something distinct to the mix of the student body, and, and forming a unified school out of that, I could see being distinctly important and quite a challenge. I think it's always funding, funding's always a challenge.
Other challenges?
I think the other big challenge, which is a regional challenge at this point, is the heroin epidemic and, and drugs in general. Not that that necessarily comes down to the schools, but it certainly has an influence in back there, unless things have changed radically since I went to high school.
Yeah, I used to say that there, there are no students dealing with drugs in, in high school, but obviously, it's, it is, it is a universal problem, one that I know, the Newbury SRO who's in the school is working on daily, but it's, it often feels like an awful battle, and I think it's certainly something that we, we pay a lot of attention to. I think it's, I think there's a lot of things that have come a long way, we talked about Triton, you know, I keep hearing about smoking in the bathroom, that's gotten so much better, and there are, you know, things that you can do, you can make your efforts, but the challenges don't go away.
Well, it's funny, because, you know, just what Damon said, not that drugs weren't around at all, and let's say my kids were in school, but it's different. And Triton, Triton, well, it's just different, the amount of use and, and what they are now is different, with the drug is itself, so Triton certainly had to come forward, and that's one of the things that I meant to say, certainly, when you market Triton, and I don't know how you're gonna do it, so it doesn't seem too obvious, but when you guys recognize that you might not be doing something that you consider to be up to standards, it got recognized, I mean, Triton has fixed a lot of the things that might not have been working well over the years, and certainly, you're gonna have new issues come up, and if you use that same paradigm, fix those things in the same fashion, that's gonna be good.
Before we get too far down the road, I just, I just wanna revert back to the successes, 'cause I think it's something important to mention, when I was in that Thursday night meeting watching you folks, one thing that was new to me was student exit interviews, maybe things that, students that maybe it didn't work out, or they moved to another school for one reason or another. I graduated from Triton, and I mean, twenty years ago, in the nineties, but I saw some kids fall through the cracks that probably didn't deserve to, and I think it was just kind of blamed on the student, where it, it was kind of some faults with the institution too, and I mean, this is years ago, but hearing about student exit interviews, you know, when it ends, you know, asking the student, what went wrong? Can you, what can we glean from this?
Yeah.
I think that's an absolute positive.
And just to dovetail on that a little bit, I really think that the district, and I worked on this, tried to work on this when I was at the, on high school council, really needs to try to improve its graduation rate. I don't see any reason why it can't be, it's the time now, I don't, I wish I could tell, give you the math on how to do it, but I just think that it's something that has to be in the forefront, and I think the high school council is, is in their school.
It is, and it's, the, the new principal has made it public, that is one of his personal goals.
Yes, I think that you gotta keep them in school, I believe keeping them in school from the morning until five, five o'clock, and they're just learning, they're not learning to learn socially, they're learning somehow, but gotta keep them in school, the only way out poverty is education.
Absolutely, and it's, it's gotta be a whatever it takes attitude, and it's, you know, Tim Regeri, the new high school principal, has it this year, and he said, I will come to your house, I will find you, I will, we will, you will talk to me, so it's, it's a, it's a, that's not to say that the previous administration over the past several years hasn't changed that, but there's a definite whatever it takes to make sure kids don't fall through the cracks.
It was a hyper-focus, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion this, in the past couple of years, lots of questions about, how is it that we have declining enrollments, steadily down, so again, since two thousand and two, lost seventeen percent of the student population, but we're, how is the budget increased by forty-four percent? So our staffing, we've lost classroom teachers from two thousand and two to two thousand and seventeen, we have twenty-five percent less classroom teachers. Fifty-one point five teachers across the district, but the number of increase, of increased number of supports, special ed teachers, reading interventionists, math interventionists, instructional assistants, we've added forty-nine point eight, so almost a one-for-one, the reason the cost isn't going down, because while it used to be okay to have one, one adult in front of twenty, twenty-five students, students fell through the cracks, so now with a whatever it takes attitude, we're providing more one-on-one and small group instruction, and so the numbers haven't gone down, we have ten less overall staff across the district than we did fifteen years ago, but there's so much more direct interventions, that's a, it's not class of twenty-five to deal with the situations as they arise, so it's, it's what's needed, but it's, it's not cheap.
It's, it's always funny, you know, you have to provide the very best education for the most reasonable rate, but it's hard for you when you market that school situation to, let's say, people my age bracket, because my classroom sizes grow up the walls.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I survive.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe there's more technology now, and you, just, whatever the reasons, and part of it is no child left behind, and all the other things that feed into why smaller classes and more intervention are important, but that's not an easy marketing.
No, absolutely.
School to a guy who's sixty and someone like seventy, it's, you know, 'cause we have big classrooms.
Worked for me, is, is the same, and I get that.
Um, I, I just wanna bring up something else that I thought of, kind of when we talked about opening up the funding for the learn, the budgeting process, and kind of what you just said about teachers made me thi- think of it, the way the district operates now, correct me if I'm wrong, is like you said, there aren't that many teachers, we, you guys seem to be investing more into programs, programming, differentiating in your teaching, and the programs, programs affect all the students, so when you look at, at enrollment numbers, for instance, by various towns, yes, you know, they, they're variable on each, in each town, but when you look at it all together as a district, and that is our schools, and especially when you get up to the middle in the, in the high school level, it's not Newbury, Salisbury, Raleigh, it's, it is Triton, when you cut programming because you don't have funding, you're harming Newbury kids, so it's not just a matter of, you know, we're, we're gonna enroll, you know, the enrollment's less, we don't have to pay for all that, you're still gonna cut a whole, a whole program, you're gonna have the potential to cut a whole program, and it will have ramifications on our own, our own students.
I think it was the principal, in fact, the end of the principal of Newbury Elementary who made the point, arguing for an additional one point five special education teachers, is that doesn't just affect special, students for the night, the students who are gonna be receiving the services, because if the student is not receiving the services, they're struggling in the classroom, and that's taking the classroom teachers' time, which is taking time away from other students, so it's, it's, it's a fighting for resources, and I think any teacher, I would put any one of our teachers up on a pedestal and say they, I mean, we'll go to the ends of the earth for these kids, but if we're not given enough fair resources, and we're not giving them fair ratios, they can do their jobs, and we've gotta reach them early, and we have a proposal for. And we've gotta reach them early and we have a proposal for fully making the garden in the budget this year, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's not a small price. But the earlier we provide interventions, the less, statistically, the less interventions we'll have to provide later on, it's kicking the can down the road. Do you wanna get interventions in the place and remediate early, or you wanna wait and then they end up on into the middle school and, you know, still, still struggling where we probably could have provided, provided better supports, that would have had them in better standing to not give it to the high school. So it's, I think the first step is saying, okay, here's something we're not doing wrong, admitting it and figuring out a solution.
That's another challenge too, is, is trying to get these kids that are coming from three different schools into the middle school, all on equal level, level ground, cause that's.
Brian, just to change the subject a little, I've been around now for three terms, I've been to a lot of school committee meetings and I happen to be at meetings at different times and I've seen the amount of testing and the amount of credibility that teachers have to undergo now, and it's off the walls and I'm not even sure it's pertinent. And then I'm looking at the curriculum restrictions and, and I mean, I have a master's in education and I don't think a lot of that curriculum restriction is probably relevant to a good product and teacher. Will we ever be able to change that or is it actually okay?
That's a huge question. So is it okay? No. We're absolutely over-regulated and you know, the buzzword that's thrown around all the time is an unfunded mandate. So if there's something that needs to happen and it's a federal requirement, then there needs to be federal dollars that follow that. Cause the amount of time it takes, I mean, the amount of time for data and reporting, you know, just, we add the time and then we have, we have a person who strictly all, she does all day is data, recording internally. So I, it's, it's, there is too much accountability. The spirit of education was not that there is an absolutely universal product because what's good in Montana is different than Massachusetts. And the needs of communities, so you know, for me, I, I personally speaking, I, it's, it's way too much accountability. We certainly need to be assessing students, but we should be assessing, formative assessments, so they're happening real time, provides data, we say, okay, we need to move here. So it's formative and informs instruction throughout the year, but high stakes testing, I don't think it's going anywhere, I don't see that changing.
So that's just one more thing.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, for us in Massachusetts, we tend to be overly regulated in Massachusetts, so basically Massachusetts takes federal laws and says, how can we make it a little more restrictive? I don't know if that's on purpose, but you know, if you take Massachusetts, I, I can't prove the statistic, but I heard that if you take Massachusetts out on its own as a state, it would actually be the eighth top performing country. If Mass was a country, it would be the eighth highest performing in the world. So I mean Massachusetts in and of itself has very high expectations. So we can keep coming down that road. Next question? All right. What would you say the, the core strength that we maintain at all costs, obviously every year we talk about budgets, they're challenging, it worked well for Newbury in the most recent years, but obviously as things are, are tight, what is it that we say we have to protect?
Well, the thing from my school is, and I don't even know if it's still there, was Dave Taylor was fantastic and had this amazing animal rescue. And I don't know what exists from that, but if any of that's still there, I'd say that's the most important thing to maintain.
Just literally, the last of it disappeared last year. Yeah, he retired, and other teachers that had been doing it retired, the ARC, so there are, there are still some animals around, but by and large, it's all the animal outside.
That was special.
Oh, I mean unbelievable anyway. All the animals sitting in a cage in the courtyard or, it's pretty phenomenal. That would be a restoration.
To speak exactly along the same lines as what Damon said is my first statement, I know core curriculum is important, but I think it's just as valuable to look at the other assets that the school is providing at this time. So I'm not saying I'd wanna lose a teacher, but I'd certainly hate to lose Ben. Or, or, alright, I just said Dave Taylor and the animals, you know, so.
I think low class sizes, low keeping, low at the elementary level especially.
Is that always translate though, that's an argument I won't get to. But you know, coming from an educated background, maybe it is important now, but I'm not always sure. You know, that book by Wayne Gottner and Postman, you know, does it really matter?
I, I could go, I could go out and prove it with data and research both sides of the arguments, I would love to see some data now. A lot of it's oh seven, five, nine. You don't even come and sit in the classroom because it's a different place than, you know, I, it was last November fifteen years ago. It is absolutely, the challenges that these teachers are facing, it is, even in five years' time, the difference. And so I would say right now, class size is absolutely, if you talk to the principals, K through twelve, they will tell you it's that level of intervention and ability to support that will make a break.
And isn't it a shame in the old days and especially what's happened in our society? But when I taught, I taught in community school concepts where I actually had people from the community coming in to help. But of course now, there's danger and everything else that goes along with that type of admittance, so.
I think that low class size, I'd say like the elementary level is important, I would like to see the high standards kept up like with the, with the, the high school trying to achieve a high graduation. I would, I would like to, the arts programs, please don't touch those. They do not touch the arts. Music makes you smarter.
I think we ought to have welding.
They do, I think someone will do that.
It's funny, I was, I was talking about that the other day, I learned to weld in the Triton metal shop. I learned how to use a bridge port, I used, learned how to use a metal lathe, it kinda makes me a little sad that all those things are gone and they've been shifted to the vocational school. But maybe in the future on my wish list might be a small return to hands-on skills, basic auto care, basic metalwork, things like that, because it definitely spawned a whole new aspect of my life, learning how to do some of those things. And some of the equipment, I, we had to blow the dust off.
Yeah.
But it was there.
Yeah, and I think it's, it has a, it's, it's an interesting debate, the fact that we've taken out the vocation out of the comprehensive high school. And there, there are students, you know, it's not popular to say, everyone says everyone has to go to college, there are some students who, who will not, and if we're gonna force them there, we're doing them a disservice because they're gonna go into debt and, and.
Be miserable.
And be miserable. So obviously everyone who is capable and should be there, we need to get them there. But if someone is motivated to go towards a trade, let's get them the tools they need, get them their diploma. I will say, Tim Rosier, the high school principal, is, is working with Whittier Tech to think creatively about kind of the after the school day, that we have those kids who the academics, they're making it and we need that motivation and we can figure out how to do something, whether it's getting over to the shop or, or whatever it is. Obviously, students un-enroll from Triton and enroll in Whittier, so it gets complicated, but, but we're having that discussion to see, cause it's a resource. And you know, as in the past, there've been times when it's contentious, but we wanna see them as a partner and help our students succeed.
We should have mentioned the arts, I didn't want to mention the sports. And I think that is a huge draw to any school.
The Triton football team was huge last year.
Yeah, and hockey. And I'm an avid hockey player myself. I actually went the very, very first year Triton was open, I was there and I tried to see, I was just too old. Yeah, I, I exceeded the age limit, I'd already gone up to play the juniors one year and they just wouldn't let me play. But anyways, I, I think the new field out there is gonna help immensely and bring the draw in of the sports, just to look at what some of the sports guys are making. Wanna trade, there's a trade. So to me, that's a big deal.
And like Chuck said, we go on to basketball, but remember too, we have, I mean, I'm at the golf course at Old Newbury, you know, and Triton School plays golf, we still wrestle, so there's an expansion of sports.
They have a swim team now.
Yeah, they have a swim team.
It's very important.
Volleyball?
Yep.
Co-op ski team?
I don't know. Yeah, it's important.
So we started as a co-op, so most of this like volleyball started as a co-op with Georgetown, so they, Georgetown students could put on a Triton uniform, which is always fun. And then event, the, the spirit as a co-op lasts one or two years, so then there's interest built, other students see, we now have forty-nine students on the volleyball team, so it's, the interest is there, so.
One more, one, 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 swim team.
Correct, yeah, yeah. And again, they're not winning meets, but they're, I mean, they're winning competitions against some well-established schools. And actually our athletic director, I forget the name of the award, but basically for Division A, which is kind of the northeast corner here, is the, it's not AD of the year, but he was the recipient for the northeast corner here and he is in the running. Athletic Director of the Year, cause he's done some great things as part of the program.
Next?
Next, all right. So you, you've mentioned it, you've talked about communication improving, anything else you wanna say on communication or you feel like you've?
I think we did.
Awesome, excellent. So as far as your view of what a, what a successful relationship looks like between the, the town of Newbury and the, the Triton Regional School District?
I think we're, I think we're all right now.
I was gonna say revert to previous.
All right, fair. So this, it's an odd question, but it's, it generates some interesting results. So what I'm trying to get at, are there things that have happened in the past? And again, it's my twenty-second year in the district, I've obviously been involved in a lot of things, but I wanna make sure that there aren't things that have happened that I'm gonna go and step on that ends up being a hornet's nest. So are there things, events, good or bad, that have happened in the past that you think still affect the way people function? So, I, I mean, the example is the, the high school and middle school, Christopher Frummer, his first year here proposed a merging of the middle school, high school, hot button issue, very hot, very contentious. So when I use the word merger around some folks, I know that raises their ire. So the same, kind of along those lines, are there things, and there may not be, most people don't have anything, but are there things that you know of that, good or bad, are kind of a hot button issue like that? You can also laugh at the fact, you know, you're right at home tonight and go, oh yeah.
For me, it's always been the agreement.
Okay.
We're working on that.
Yeah, exactly, so.
I mean, I'm sorry, Chuck.
Yeah, I don't fully understand the formula for assessment, but I'm learning. Joe had brought in some speakers into Little Grange Hall and had brought a light to a, a lot of how this formula had worked, so we, we have a much, much better understanding now. And that's what we need, if, if we understand something, we won't be afraid of that.
That's when Bruce came.
You know, this is great.
I mean, some people may be in this community and some people certainly in different parts of the country have different definitions and different feelings attached to those definitions when the word regionalization comes up, or merging. So Brian, when we get a superintendent such as yourself at our school committee and we continue down a road that has, where everyone says transparency, but I call it more communication, like you're definitely trying to do. You know, maybe those are the things that will open up a different, you know, scope of feeling for people when it comes to regionalization. So I think that's, you're, you're heading into redefining Triton's stance, its definition, and along with that, how everyone looks at a regional school district. So you, you know, it's not a very big job, you'll have a good time at it and.
I'd be pretty good at it. I could just get healthy by six, it's no problem. Talking to too many people, caught everything, all three times.
Probably spread it to all three.
I probably wasn't public health, right? And you have the thoughts there, are we good for the next question?
Yeah.
So anything that you believe needs my immediate attention?
Well, clearly the, the agreement. One of the things that some of us have talked about is host agreements since Newbury, is the host town, we have added expenses around that. We weren't sure if that would show up in this agreement or need to be something that's worked out separately, but I guess it ties back into the, the hot button issues for people, especially in our town is, you know, we, the student resource officer, I think is a Newbury officer, we pay for that, you know, the patrols around.
Do you guys pay for that now?
We do.
They finally took that.
Okay. But not everyone knows that.
Right.
So we still get your word.
Right, so it's in, it's assessed, we pay an invoice to the town of Newbury.
And so there's things around the school being in, in the town that I think, you know, have a, a big influence on the town. And, and a lot of people are very sensitive about, you know, whether it's just all the school buses coming in or kids speeding on school street because, you know, they're gonna speed somewhere and they gotta get to school and they gotta get away from school as fast as possible.
And fire the police and all the responsibilities.
I'm sure you didn't, Chuck, but I know you're an angel, so. So those are concerns from the Newbury side of things.
And they're important, Damon's right, they're important.
And it's not only Triton that's around that side of town too, there's also governors.
Oh yeah.
So there's a huge amount of, of influx of people that don't live in Newbury, over there in Newbury.
There's not as many cars, I mean, I think Damon's talking about little congestion.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was not brought up by the committee, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, just smirks. So that is not going to be proposed by the committee, but certainly that would be something that I would say if the town of Newbury is gonna suggest that, that it would be part of the regional agreement, that would be part of the discussion.
I know traffic has changed crazy.
Do you get more kids driving to school now?
There were a lot of kids, I don't, I don't wanna say yes more than, I mean, there's certainly a lot of kids, a lot of students driving. We've, I mean, we've condensed bus routes, we at one point had thirty runs, we had twenty-four that were two-tier, so went out and did a middle school, high school, then an elementary, and then six that did just elementary. We now have twenty-four total two-tier, we've gotten rid of six single-tier run-bone. So we packed them tighter, we have to provide a run for every student, that's by law, but, so I, buses are mostly full most days. But I, I still think there are certainly a lot of kids riding, absolutely. We don't have a restriction to say you can't. But there's certain.
Probably a lot of the kids have cars now.
Yes, I would say that's.
If there are other regional districts that have tackled the hosting fee problem and have some direction and have put something in their agreement and looked at hosting fees and it's part of their agreement and we're not doing it, it's not good. So I don't know if other regions have done that. If it's not being done, that's okay, but if you look at Massachusetts and if it's being done, we should really look at it.
Yeah, no, I've never seen it, there are a few agreements that have like a side agreement, we've definitely looked at them, that have a landlord type side agreement, so that maybe contained in those, cause those aren't always public, but as far as in the regional agreement, I've never seen it.
What did they call that side agreement, if it wasn't hosting cars, what did they call it?
No, it's most often it's a landlord tenant agreement, so it spells out specifically, and, and in some cases, the towns that are part of the region may have very, very different resources that belong to the town versus what belongs to the district. So it's spelling out exactly what a town pays for when they own a property versus what the district would pay for as far as using that piece of property. It's more of what those, those
And what you're saying is you haven't seen any hosting.
I've never seen a hosting, no, in any of those. Yeah, I, I don't know what the breakdown was, I'll have to go back and look, I went through about thirty-five agreements, there were a mix of regional agreements and vocational technical agreements because those tend to be very, it's a similar structure that they use in their agreement.
Much for reading through that, good night.
You should have seen the summary document that I put together to remember what I
Like every day, I'm like, oh, here's another summary. But I mean, that's, I mean, certainly, if it exists, it should be on the table as a discussion.
And I mean, it comes
I was gonna say, that's another discussion, that's for sure.
The idea that comes to me from, and others at the table, from the fact that it does exist, so, I mean, I've got some areas that I can research too and I'll get back to you if I find it, you know, we can reach into some of the state people and ask them to research that for us. So it's just because if it's something that's being done, I mean, government does try to take and move some of the issues that they have followed to us with certain, you know, help. And it's just, those are the things that are there. So, and I, it's good for us to have an answer. Right now, we can say, well, it's not done much. So as long as that's true, it's good, you know, so.
Anything else?
Have we thought about changing the time that high school starts?
Yes, three o'clock? Yeah. Kids wake up.
So that is a ongoing discussion, I'm actually part of the, the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. We've been discussing that, I was involved with it last year as well, we've been discussing that over the past year. Masconaham and Newburyport are the two that are the farthest along down the road of actually doing it. I believe they both start currently at seven-thirty and are moving to an eight o'clock start.
When do you guys start?
We start at seven-forty-two. So already, you know, make it as difficult as possible. But for us to move to eight o'clock, it's an eighteen-minute change. So the discussions, I, you know, it's been all over the place. It's been basically parent-driven at Masco. Just the, the research, I mean, scientifically, it's, it makes sense that high school students want to sleep.
It's healthier for the high school student to start later and it's healthier for the elementary school student to start earlier.
So theoretically, it'd be swapping, so elementary kiddo is always, I know my one, we're always up at the crack of dawn. Whereas your high schooler, my high schooler, would, actually, she's not that bad, but, you know, would, would sleep later.
Teenagers sleep.
It's, it's, it seems to me that it doesn't really prepare for the workplace.
But yeah, by the time they get, but by the time they get to adulthood, they, those hormones and everything that's in their brain is already leveled out.
You mean, well, depends, I'm sorry.
Not coming in at one o'clock?
Yeah, well, you, you know, then you can't. But as a, as a high school kid, I, I know that science has shown that.
So the issue comes down to, it's, the, as I said, Masco's probably the farthest along. Newburyport was close and they actually just, I recently read the newspaper, they kind of pulled back. The issue becomes one of logistics. So it's either, we say everyone starts at eight-twenty-five, eight-thirty, like our elementaries do, and we double the amount of buses we have. Pretty sure you wouldn't mind putting a dollar bill. Or we swap, which creates a whole host of issues. So for parents, a lot of younger students, the older sibling is providing daycare in the afternoon. So then you have the exact opposite in the morning. And then for high school, you, speaking about athletics, if athletics are starting around two-fifteen, they don't start at three-thirty. It just, and that was part of the Newbury report, is that they were going to have to start letting students out early and start missing class if you're heading off to a competition somewhere. So it's, I, you know, technically, makes perfect sense. Logistically, it's, it's a huge culture shock.
It has to be all or nothing, if you're going to have the kids, to have kids playing sports, either they all make the switch.
Right, so it has to look like a case in lieu. In my, my, I will say this here, my statement has been, and John Bernard, who's the superintendent in North Reading, we keep saying the same thing, is that so we talk about the overbooked kiddo, right? The kid who just is up every day at five-thirty, gets to high school, goes to practice, then goes to play practice, then comes home and does three hours of homework, and he goes to bed at midnight. If we're shifting that day from getting up at five-thirty or six to midnight to seven to one AM, not interested in the discussion. If we can find a way to take an hour out of their day in homework or whatever else we're talking about, then it's, that's a worthwhile discussion. But to just shift everything they're doing one hour, because they still need to, they will still research or they still want to go, but at the same time. So to delay everything they need to do by another hour is not helpful, so. So yes, it's being discussed, I don't comment there yet. Waiting to see who, who can do their challenge successfully first.
Did seven-forty-two start as like a time that function kind of created? Or did Triton wake up one morning on the street and say seven-forty-two?
It's good, I don't know the history there.
Because there could be, there could be a tendency for these times that schools begin to be just something that was a natural process. It seemed to make sense, and you know, if they seem to make sense, even though it goes against scientific, when does a kid learn? He might have to change his, you know, learn.
Well, and it's, I mean, we have to have a minimum of nine hundred and ninety hours of time on learning, so. We're seven-forty-two to two-thirteen. You know, it's where most high schools are starting in that seven-thirty, seven-forty-five. So we're in the right ballpark, we just like rarely give unique numbers.
Might be a result of function.
So, looking at it, no decisions yet. Anything else?
If I could wave a magic wand, I would like to have the Triton Regional School District, um, all of its schools be a shining beacon on the North Shore and have parents say, I need to go look for property in Newbury, Rowley, or Salisbury, because my kid's going to go to school at Triton. That's what I would like to see.
And if you had a magic wand, it would be too much power.
But it would all be good, yeah.
We don't need frogs.
Yeah, we don't need frogs.
I would like you to wave that wand.
I would, I would like
But we'll work, we'll work towards it without the wand, just by
Yeah, but that's what I, that would be my wish, is that Triton could be, you know, I want to go, I have to go, we're going to go look for homes, we're going to go move, let's go look at Newbury, Rowley, Salisbury.
It's already a lot, you know.
They're coming, they're coming.
Brian, I want to thank
Thank you very much, I appreciate this information and, and school add into the database.
Thank you all.
Thank you, you two, for coming. Thank you very much.
It's been a powerful night, guys, so, all right.
I'm going to add things to the agenda tomorrow.
Is there any old business? Citizens' concerns. Correspondence, we have a letter from the Byfield Arts Center. And I think everyone's kind of probably read it, let me see if I can get to it, I did, am I lucky with my little pink tabs? "In November two-sixteen, the Byfield Arts Center marks its tenth anniversary of the building committee through, with arts in these ten years. Our stage has seen more than seventy-five theatrical productions, over a hundred musical concerts, and a variety of dance performance recitals, arts shows. We have hosted conventions, lectures, meetings held by civic and private groups. Our space has been used for various fundraisers for veterans, towns, groups, student programs, I think the Boy Scouts, I'm just throwing that in. And we continue to provide some space for friends and families to celebrate." So as you read this, guys, which we've all read, and this is communication that's available for, well, let me finish, it's not that long. "In two thousand and sixteen, we were forced to partner with a Triton school, and you follow it, located in Hable to continue our program, which was started in two thousand and fourteen to address the needs of rescued. We have also partnered with the Newbury Art Association to provide painting classes for adults. These classes will resume in February after a short winter break. We are again working with Fusion Blue Productions to produce the fourth annual Byfield Music and Arts Festival. Plans are well underway and many local, regional artists and musicians will be participating. In addition to the new windows installed by the town in Main Hall in December sixteen, two-sixteen, we're able to make other improvements to our facility. New cabinets were put in the kitchen and our backstage area, and new lighting and sound equipment was purchased and great. And grant monies from several local and cultural councils." So they've done quite a bit. "The success of the Byfield Arts Community Center relies on the support that we receive from the town of Newbury. And we encourage our neighbors and the willingness of many volunteers to bring their time and talents together to help us in their effort. Additionally, grant funding allows us to expand our program and facilities. We, as the Board of Directors of the B C A C, are pleased to continue our mission of building community through, with arts and to provide vibrant community arts center in the town of Newbury. Heidi, Linda, Chris, and Dave." So we want to, they've certainly done a lot with the building that they have. We have minutes. We have, have everyone looked at those minutes? Are we prepared to take a motion on December thirteen, two-sixteen?
Motion to approve, is ready.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
January third, two-seventeen? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Warrants, motion?
Do we have warrants tonight? Okay, motion to assign warrants.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any meeting updates?
Do you want to hear about, I mean, it's too much to go into what was covered in the the budget review, but, you know, certainly interesting to have been at those meetings, see what the different schools, you know, I went to the elementary school one, which is why I was not at the last meeting. What the different schools are trying to tackle and what they're trying to accomplish, so certainly, back to the communication, certainly, a lot of communication going on and a lot of interesting things happening in our schools. I don't know, you went to Thursday night, is there anything particularly to say that you can condense?
Basically budgeting, I already brought up the student accident abuse, which I thought was fab, fabulous. I mean, I understand their concerns over dropping enrollment numbers, but, you know, for us, it's a positive, tax-wise, it's, it's a tough place to be in.
Remember Wednesday and Thursday night, and they're challenging, I mean, you got to come in, we get savings on one end, but then goes away on the other, so. Good luck putting your budget together.
And it's funny, the message that you might glean from that and what I said earlier about going to school committee meetings, every once in a while as a selectmen of our towns, it would be good us to make sure, not just when we're kind of in a bind to have to go, but we should sit in on school committee meetings when we can.
Well, budget's the best time.
Well, even, even when some of the committees during the year just go over and visit.
So can I just read something real quick before we go? This was a memorandum of a meeting that I went to, this is dated back in December fourteen, so it's probably changed. It was from Michelle Presver, the school business administrator. So right now, they're looking at, this is the special education drivers, and I guess I can have Ellen making it as popular as we all want, but. Tuition costs are expected to decrease due to the departure of the district of two students with substantial needs. So approximate savings is estimated to be three hundred thousand. They need another autism spectrum disorder program. Estimated cost of the second program is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, so there's half of the savings there. And then, another item being considered for the special education department is the district-wide restructuring for evaluations in service delivery for students, and the potential cost of this could be in the area of a hundred and fifty. So that's what I meant, you save it on one side and then you have to spend it on the other, so.
But a lot better to start with something that you're respending. There's also a, not to keep this meeting going, but we're estimating another savings of five hundred, two thousand dollars out of school choice, that was one of the, that was on Thursday night.
Yeah, that was specified.
So that's an early, actually, that's been further refined in the presentations that were made last week. Give that document actually more detail, that was kind of a preliminary before the holidays. But that's obviously significant savings, so at least be starting with a, some savings rather than starting already in the whole, so.
So you guys keep us informed of your meetings, I think that's great.
Exactly, the session we have done, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?